All right, we have reconvened. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
See how big they are?
I know.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up is approval of the agenda.
May I suggest we move items seven, make it C, A, and B in that order. Since we have some guests who are not school people, so they don't need to sit through school stuff.
So you're making the motion that you want item C to be first under the special reports?
Yes, please.
Okay. Need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Jody?
Bruner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Announcements and recognitions. I have an American Education Week proclamation. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction issues this proclamation. Whereas American Education Week began in 1921, as a week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And whereas the demands on public schools have increased over the years as communities, business, and industry, and higher education expect our students to graduate with the knowledge, skills, and habits to be college and career ready. And whereas meeting those demands begins with our public school teachers who devote their lives to their students, teaching them content, knowledge woven with opportunities to develop the skills and habits that allow them to succeed, including being able to think creatively and critically, collaborate, communicate, accept responsibility, and persevere when faced with the inevitable challenges in life. And whereas public schools are more successful when parents and family members feel welcome at school, our active partners in their children's education join with teachers, administrators, educational support personnel, and other staff, school staff members, on working towards student success and advocating for the needs of public schools. And whereas public education requires support and investment by our communities, and elected leaders at the local and state level to provide adequate funding and ensure strong educational outcomes for all students, therefore be it resolved that the week of November 13 through 17 through 2017 be declared American Education Week, time to support public education and honor the individuals who are working in our schools to ensure every child graduates college and career ready. So, next up, student reports. Carter Friend is here, middle school.
High school had homecoming, for this month, had homecoming week. They had a wide breadth, wider array of activities, like powder puff, lip sync competition, circle bash football game, and their homecoming dance. And they had community spirit, their community spirit has been on display for that week. Lincoln, they continued to do, they did the 10th annual road rally, which was rescheduled due to their terrain October 13. Their student leadership team is, they worked on to create a large bus, collect items for the stuff to bus project. And they had a book fair. The middle school had their student council, the election assembly. And the presidents are Carter Friend, Josie Treder, Ellen Anderson, and right now, they were running their magazine, Yankee Candle fundraiser, to show support for the school. Washington is, they're in the beginning stages of celebrating the 2017 National Blue Ribbon Award from the U.S. Department of Education. And they celebrated Eagle Day last Friday with the third grade taking the lead, celebrating our character. Lakeview kicked off laps for Lakeview, with the bang on the PTA. PTA-sponsored raise record-setting for the school. All dollars will go right back to the school to help support programming with the support from the PTA. They're also excited to start a new program called the Lakeview Loves, which, that will provide food to children and families that will be sent home in backpacks every Friday and the day before starting at Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next up are public comments. These are non-agenda items. Citizens may speak regarding items not on the agenda under public comments, but no school board action will be taken. Issues raised may become part of a future agenda. For agenda items, citizens may speak regarding specific issues on the agenda at the time the board discusses that item. Citizen comment requests should be filled out prior to speaking. Is there anyone here for non-agenda public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to special reports and action. We've moved up the Whitewater Aquatic and Fitness Center budget presentation to the first, so. Can you get away?
All right, good evening. I'm Eric Betcher, the new Parks and Recreation Director here. I've been here since June, finally getting acclimated here. Thanks for having me tonight. Tonight I was just gonna kind of go through our Aquatic and Fitness Center budget for 2018, and kind of talk about some of the things we've done in 17 and 18. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. We took over the aquatic center through the Parks and Recreation Department in July of 2016. I divided the budget up into two categories for tonight. We have the operations, which has our revenues and expenses, and then I will also have our capital will be separate too, that shows more of the actual capital items that are put into the budget. So as you can see here with the revenues for 2016, just want you to remember that this was half a year during the transition time, so our total operating for that year was $288,366. We budgeted last year $768,225. The actual estimate this year, this again is kind of rough estimate, we were hoping around $786,000. And for the 2018 budget, we are looking at $723,916. The revenues, as you can see, from 17 to 18 have dropped a little bit. There's a few reasons for that. One is we did have the old Whitewater Aquatic Center that canceled out, or finished out. They did give us money from what they had left over, so that's why our revenue's a little bit more in that category. And then for our budget this year, I was looking at trying to be as accurate as I could to what our actual revenues are going to be. On the expense side, as you can see, again, we have $388,000 total operating expenses. We budgeted $768,225 to try and have a balanced budget. This year our expenses are a little bit up, $864,360. I would like to point out that the $43,000, the $214,000, those expenses are a little bit higher this year because we did a pool shutdown. So with that, we did an acid wash. We caught up on a lot of those maintenance things and had a deep clean that involved painting, upgrading some of the lighting, and things like that. So that's kind of why those are a little more inflated. This next year in 18, that's where we look to get back to a little bit normal. As you can see, in 16 we had $99,000, in 2017 $188,000, and now we're back to $182,000, kind of in those utilities and HVAC area. So overall, we're looking at having a balanced budget for 2018 on the operations side. If you look at the capital revenue, this is split up basically by, the city puts in $50,000, and so does the school district. As you can see, the actual, in 2016, we had $25,000. That's because you, half of it went to the old regime, and then we had $50,000 into ours. The 16-17, if you look at 17-18, how the budget for capital money is, is we bill you guys and the city builds the school district, and the school district pays $50,000. But since you run a school year of 16-17, we actually split that. So $25,000 goes into 16, $25,000 goes into 17. So in 17, we'll bill you for 17-18, $25,000 of that will go into the 17 budget, and $25,000 will go into the 18 budget. So that's kind of one of those things that we always have to keep track of. So overall, we'll have $100,000 in our capital again this year. For capital expenses, now if you look at 2016, that's where we had $160,000. That was because at the time, the board had decided we were replacing our fitness equipment rather than we're just do one or two treadmills. We did all of them. So that's why we had the over expenditure in 2016. If you look at our 2017 estimate, we are not spending as much this year in the capital improvements, trying to make up for that a little bit. So for 2017, we're looking at spending just, you know, way around $21,000 in our capital improvements. Now back then, now in 2018, we'll look at going back up to that $100,000. Does anybody have any questions? Some other things for facility improvements we did for 16 and 17, again, we replaced all of the cardio machines that are all brand-new, that's the treadmills, the stair climbers, all of that. Deep cleaned and repainted the interior. We refinished the fitness room floor. We upgraded a lot of the lighting to have the LED both in the pools and the fitness center. And we did a deep clean and acid wash of the lap pool. Now that's something that happens every four to five years. This is kind of just to give an example, or picture of what it looks like now. You know, fresh coat of paint really brightened up the fitness center. The floor in the studio is, you know, bright and shiny again, and the pool is as beautiful as it's ever been, so. Plan for 2018 and 2017, 18, this is, we're gonna look at replacing some of the strength training equipment now. That equipment is all in pretty good shape, but we're looking at upgrading some of that. Replacement of a rock ball behind the hot tub, that's something we're doing internally. The old one is cracking up, so we need to replace that. And then we're gonna look at replacing the locker room floor tile, and finally, replacing boiler for the pool and locker room. Those are kind of our big-ticket items for 2018 coming up. Kind of some of our goals for 2018, we're looking at ways to increase revenues by adding more programming, increasing facility memberships. Part of that is due to the improvements we make by making the facility more presentable. We're hoping to get more people to buy into it. And then the other thing we're looking at doing is reducing some of the maintenance costs through reducing some of the services that we hire out. Currently, we work with Carico, they do all of our chemicals, but they also do a lot of our maintenance. We are looking at bringing some of that back into our own department. We have a facility maintenance guy that's going to get his CPO, so we're hoping to bring in a lot of that maintenance under our style. And then the cleaning contracts, looking at those, doing more of that in-house as well. So that is my presentation, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Arnon, thank you.
All right. Thank you. You know, I am from Green Bay. The plate on my car still says Minnesota, but I was born in Ransfield, today.
All right, now the building program goals presentation, part two.
Okay, early in, kind of said we always keep the big three. We have a literacy goal, a math goal, and a culture goal. And I'll start with our literacy goal. Our building leadership team worked really hard, but then we also engaged our entire staff on setting some of the action steps after we set that goal. So our first goal is during the course of the 17-18 school year, 55% of all students will meet and/or exceed targeted literacy growth as measured in RIT points from fall to spring. We decided to not write our goals with subgroups any longer. You might notice before, we were really targeting our special ed and our ELL populations. And what we realized in kind of doing some data digging is, we are starting to close that achievement gap. We're doing pretty, pretty well with that. And so we really wanted to look at all students. We didn't want to just look at those subgroups. And then you'll see in our bullet point for action step number three, our teachers all engage in professional learning communities. That's where our grade level teams get together. And that's where we really want to target those special ed categories and the ELL categories to make sure that we're still closing that achievement gap. So while we set the overall goal for all, our action steps really align with the targeted instruction that we're doing in the classrooms. So you can see our action steps that go with that. We continue at Lincoln to really do a co-teach model. We do, we have put in our supports for our special education students with our special education teachers and our literacy interventionists into the classroom, so that instead of pulling students out, they have access to the general regular education curriculum, and then we're supporting them within that. And then our second goal is for math, so same type of goal. We chose 60% after looking at kind of the trajectory of how we've done so far, and NWA will always tell you, you know, 50 to 60%. So for math, we targeted 60% of all students will meet or exceed. And again, what's more important to us is those action steps. So we're continuing to do co-teach in the math area as well. And then you'll notice, we said in our action steps that we will continue to target specific subgroups within our PLC meetings to make sure that we're really making sure not only are we closing the achievement gap, but we're excelling all students in the area of math. And then our last goal is more of our culture goal. Obviously, we know that if students are engaged and they're being advocates for their own learning, we see better results in the classroom. So for us, we want 100% of our classrooms to develop a mission statement. That's part of the leader in me philosophy, is that if you can engage students in a common mission for your classroom, that you'll see better results, both academically and how they treat each other. And so how we're doing that is, we continue through our grant process for the leader in me. We just, we're trained in aligning academics. That happened at the beginning of the school year. And so all students are keeping data notebooks and leadership notebooks to track their own data. They have, all classrooms have developed mission statements that are shared with all of our related arts, so that everyone is engaged in what that mission looks like. And then they're revisiting those mission statements, and then we have assemblies throughout the year that are focused on that. So students are sharing those with other students as well. Questions about our goals?
Hi, good evening. Actually, this year, it's a departure for me, because I typically have multiple goals. And I have one goal that I'm really focusing on, and it is hitting all facets of the work that I do. So the goal is focusing on mental health for students. And on a daily basis, my job has really evolved into working with families and children to support mental health needs. On a daily basis, I am brainstorming with principals, teachers, or other people of a particular student's with some needs. So what we want to do and be very purposeful about is to really think about social emotional learning programming in the district. And this is for all ages, from our littlest three-year-olds to our 21-year-olds in the district, and how we can help support them and help them develop skills. We do actually a tremendous job, I think, in this district of when a student is, for some reason, not reading on grade level or not grasping a math concept. We have all kinds of specialists that swoop in, lots of ways to diagnose the problem, and some really specific interventions that we can do. But we haven't always had a large toolkit of social emotional learning things for our students. So we're working on that. Actually, we've been working for a few years now at the universal level, so all students in the district will get social emotional learning curriculum as part of what they do at the elementary level. We use Second Step for that. And so once every six-day cycle, they have a guidance counselor comes into the classroom and does a developmental guidance lesson. Some of them are, they're very age-appropriate. Some of them might be how to deal with conflict, how to, you know, collaborate with others. And they use very child-friendly terms, like how do you fill someone's bucket instead of dump someone's bucket? Or those are type of things that might come home that you would hear. But they're really meaningful things that help them to have skills. We're implementing at the same concept at the middle school level this year, and we're implementing something called DBT. It's a really fancy sounding, but it's called dialectical behavior therapy. And simply, all it is, is a set of 30 social emotional learning skills that get implemented into the curriculum. And our new guidance counselor, Katie McIntyre, is going into the classrooms once a month and talking about skills, like how can you do relationship skills? Or if you're having a conflict with someone, how might you do relationship repair with them, or those type of things. So very basic skills that are things that we're finding that our students need help and support in. And we're working on moving that same dialectical behavior therapy into the general curriculum at the high school. It's something we need. So one of the main parts of the goal there is to have some, you know, at the universal level for all students that, and some comprehensive ongoing professional development, not just for our staff that are teaching these concepts, but for all the staff, so it's a whole school buy-in, so we can help children use those skills when they see them frustrated with something or encountering some sort of concern in their life, that we're able to help talk them through that. We've developed a tremendous amount of partnerships to do this. In particular, we've been working a lot with Jefferson County and Fort Healthcare. Jefferson County has done a lot of helping provide for and pay for training for a lot of these things. And then we've also wanted to make sure that we up our game for when, not at a universal level, but at a level when students are exhibiting things that are very problematic or need for some additional small group or one-on-one support, we want to make sure that we have that for them. So through a partnership that we have with Fort Healthcare, and now also with the Fort Atkinson School District and Jefferson School District, we have a mental health therapist, Courtney Quast. We piloted last year, we were the first school in this consortium that piloted last year having someone one day a week at the high school. We now also have someone one day a week at the middle school, so Mondays at the middle school, Wednesdays at the high school. And students have access to, at no cost to the families, access to a mental health therapist for students that are exhibiting higher levels of need. The program right now is paid for, whatever insurance or Medicaid can be billed is, but then the rest is through donations. And so we have a lot of partners that are helping us do that, community partners, Women Who Care, the Fort Healthcare, it has a coalition that is for that, and so we've just been working together and are able to have it in two schools. My dream actually someday, and what I'm working towards, I've been meeting with that group monthly, is for that to be exactly like we have school nurses. So if a student has a headache, has a cut on their finger, something's going on, they can go and see the school nurse. Fort Healthcare has been amazing, a leader in this area for 25 years. They've had a school nursing program. It started with our own Diana Hoffman in Fort School Districts. And they have now nine school districts that they're in, and they're Fort Healthcare employees, but they're in our schools. And so that is how I'd like to see mental health happen. That's what we're working on. Where they might happen to be a Fort Healthcare employee, there's a lot of good benefits to doing that, liability, insurance, and, you know, training-wise. But that, we would have that available in all our schools, so I'd like to move that actually eventually to the elementary level. We're not quite there. We're working on that. But that's part of what we're doing with these ongoing partnerships, so that people have social emotional learning at a universal level. They might get something at another level of group where we provide some support, you go through the county, went their counseling lab, seeing their school guidance counselor. And then for a small group of select students who are not able to access mental health therapy outside of the school day, we're able to connect them with that, regardless of if the family is eligible for insurance or not. So it's kind of what that's going with. And along with that, we are piloting a SSIS, Social Emotional Learning, with grades four and five this year. It's actually a measurement tool that students in fourth and fifth grade can use, and we can see what kind of skill areas that the students as a grade need more support in to make sure we're targeting the right thing. So if we see a lot of students that need help with conflict resolution, maybe their conflict with anxiety, or some other different types of social emotional learning things, we're able to make sure we target our group, our whole classroom lessons or small group lessons towards those students. And so we're working on that, as there's a group of us that are doing that as well too. So it could kind of be a screener to make sure that we're able to say, are we targeting the right skills that they need? And then able to measure again if we've made a difference in them developing those skills, so they can be really, you know, caring, competent, and capable learners. Because if we're not able to fix these things or help them learn these skills, we're probably not going to be able to get to the reading and the writing and the math and those type of things. So, well, I typically come in front of you and have an English language learner goal, a special ed goal, people service's goal. I can tell you that this is the most prevalent thing I'm working on in all of those areas, so we're trying to get a much better systematic support things for our children and families. Questions about that?
How many students are taking advantage of individual services?
That's a really great question. So we have, right now, we have some students that are in the process of still filling out paperwork, and some students that are already seen. So we, at the high school right now, we have about 15 students that are seeing, at the middle school, about 10. But that's actually been growing since the school year has started, because the middle school is now first available. I think in a matter of a couple weeks, she's gonna have more students on her caseload than she can handle, and we might have to see if we can move some of them to an every-other-week type of model to see her. But we have been surprised in a good way at the overwhelming response to it and the need for it, and seeking it out. And as we've approached families with some children that have experienced significant needs, they've been really grateful for this opportunity, so that's been a good thing. Good question.
Maybe just to piggyback, Lenore, and we're still working on this between Matt, Lenore, and I, but in the governor's budget, it talks about dollars for assisting in mental health. Right now, our calculations are approximately $7,000 additional money. But to keep in mind what that looks like, that's about 26 weeks of helping somebody one day a week, roughly speaking. So, right now, mental health, basically, the funding, you know, right now, we've got money that's been donated locally. One family donated $10,000, so that's students anonymously, students that could not afford to pay, because this is a billable opportunity. But we have people helping out in that way. But, you know, it's, you know, how should I put it? The money, we appreciate the $7,000, we could use more.
Good evening, I'm Tanya Wijahwa, it's the middle school principal. Our goals too were also created by our building leadership team and informed by both our content and related arts teams and instructional support teams at the middle school. And you will notice our goals as well this year have focused on all students. We really felt like all meant all, and not just looking at student sub demographics. And we took a lot of time delving into our data to look where we could continue to build on our strengths and what's working, as well as those areas we have continuing for growth and a need for improvement. So we have a math and a literacy goal this year, specific in reading. We're looking at 60% of students that score below the grade level norm, which is the 50th percentile on math, on that fall assessment, will meet or exceed their targeted growth as measured in RIT points on the spring math assessment. And then in math, we're looking at 55% of students reaching that goal. Our steps towards accomplishing that are looking at explicitly teaching content in addition to academic vocabulary, as well as strategy instruction at the classroom level. Last year, we spent a lot of time as a team looking at learning objectives and success criteria, and making sure that students were able to articulate, as well as demonstrate what quality grade level standards-based work looked for, looked like. And this year, our goal is to take that a step further and better utilize formative assessment measures, not only to provide feedback for instruction and how we can better support our students in meeting their learning goals, but also so that students can understand where they are on a learning continuum in relationship to the success criteria, and how they can use explicit strategies to move forward and meet those learning goals. And then lastly, you'll look at, the last bullet point, they're talking about providing opportunities for students who need additional support when they don't demonstrate mastery within our defined instructional times. Like links, we too have a model that's embedded within the classroom, where we're doing supports into the classroom for students, both special education, ELL, our different specialists, and also supporting teachers through a co-planning process to help meet those individualized learning needs and goals for our children.
So the tech department has come up with two goals for this year. The first one's primarily a concern with the website. As we talked about last, last month, there's an issue with the ADA complacency. Our goal is to take care of all of the A and double-A errors for websites, and make the website double-A compliant. That process is kind of like the standard for ADA complacency, and it will put us in a good position for the future. It really will work, it really involves the work of the staff, working on mediating individual pages, group-wide pages, or departments, as well as working with our school, so you can keep the plates up to date, and then removing any out-of-date content that's on the websites. This process is gonna take a lot of work. We're right now about 270 errors over the pages, but I think this is doable over the course of the next year. But I think this is doable over the course of the next year. The second goal is focusing on staff development on technology. I think with the addition of John Howers as our tech integrator, we're doing a very good job of helping integrate technology into the classroom. He's in a number of really cool initiatives where he's gotten and helped co-teach classes to bring technology in, to meet with teachers and figure out what's a good way to bring in new technologies. I don't think we do a very good job of making this information accessible after the fact. So we do this awesome thing with, you know, one of our teachers at Lincoln, and then nobody else knows about it to start using that philosophy or that training in their classroom. So we're really focusing on getting all this information in the one accessible location that all staff can kind of reference and also go to if they have any questions on some of our common technologies. The district utilizes a lot of online resources for like keyboarding and for professional development and other curriculum areas that we provide training for. But again, that content's not available after the fact. So we're really looking to get that information all in one spot. Along with this goal, we're also looking at doing this for parents and students. So a lot of districts have parent resource pages that you can go to that have information on Infinity Campus and setting up a portal and things like that. You won't find any of that on our website or anywhere else for the district unless you contact the building. So we're going to work at integrating that into this goal as well. Any questions?
Just a question on the ADA.
Sure.
You had mentioned two or 300 errors. And most of those errors, you can talk to us about pictures or most of those pictures or what?
The pictures would be one error.
Yeah, but how many?
There'd be...
Two hundred and thirty-some different errors?
Yes.
You know, one picture wrong is...
All the pictures together is just one error. So... So we're at, about 80% of it is compliant. We're meeting about 80% of the...
So far?
Yes, as of the 16th. We meet about 80% of the criteria for compliance. But that other 20%, it's about 270 errors across all our pages.
Is there any questions on the technology goals or should we just move right into the ADA? Civil rights update?
So, it's okay. So we've worked with Mark and Lenore somewhere. We've moved forward with the ADA compliance. We've generated our correction action plan as a draft. I don't know if that was handed out in your packet, but it just kind of goes over the outline of what the district's initiative is, the outline of kind of what caused the district to go on this route, and then the plan with the timeline and the people that are involved. So it really focuses on the technology department and then the people services department and our staff with training. So we've got that together. We met with Siteimprove to get their voluntary credentials to get to the Office of Civil Rights, which they'll be able to send in to actually do our physical testing of the website where it's just testing that we can't do with a machine. And then once we get all this submitted, OCR should be able to get back to us with a firm timeline. We're using estimates of 180 days from the date of receipt of the complaint. But until we get a firm timeline, we don't know exactly how long we have to get everything in compliance. Any questions?
I'm looking at your corrective action plan.
Yep.
Can we get to that, Jody? Another timeframe?
Yep.
So that February 1, 2017 target completion date? I'm confused by that.
It should be 2018.
Okay, that makes it better. Now I get it, thanks.
That should be 18. And this one is actually the template that Siteimprove sent us. So there, you'd have two documents. You'd have the template that we use to modify ours and then our actual plan.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Next is the use of Fund 41, the capital improvement fund.
Just trying to figure out my stuff here.
Not related.
At the last meeting, we discussed the establishment of the capital expansion fund, which occurred in August of 2004. The resolution itself was unclear as to the intent of the funds. In the minutes described that the money was going to be used for long-term maintenance needs. So what we're seeking tonight is clarification on the intent of Fund 41. So our legal counsel has developed a resolution that's in front of you and on the screen, which would open up the use of Fund 41 for everything approved by DPI.
You want to approve the proposed resolution?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Sure. If you look at the, what the lawyer sent us, I'm not sure what we can talk about because it says something about privacy and all that kind of stuff. But the letter, is that what you have on the screen there?
It's the resolution that they recommended.
Is this up there?
Yep.
Well, if you look at what the, they sent us, we cannot do that. Anytime you change something in the 41, the state law says it has to be done at a annual hearing. We already had our annual hearing. So theoretically, if somebody was to audit it or look at it, they're going to say you can't do that unless you're at an annual hearing. Am I reading it wrong?
I'm not sure where you see that.
Second paragraph, or the, I go to the legal authority altogether. And I'm looking at the, I guess he quotes the statute explicitly. In the statute, it says, "Such money shall not be used for any other purpose or be transferred to any other fund except by authorization of a majority of the vote of electors." And they're talking about a common school, we're talking about a unified, "at a subsequent annual meeting." And only if that notice has been on there, John. So the subsequent annual meeting would have to be the meeting coming up in August. That's the way I read it. So I'll be voting no.
I think it says, once we have it, we can't transfer it except at an annual meeting.
Once we have it, we can't change the direction of how we spend.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
But no, right now, we're establishing what we're going to do with it. We're not transferring the money. We're not saying we're taking it from 41 and sending it somewhere else.
All right. "Such money shall not be used for any other purpose or trans..." "except by authorization of vote of the electors," and that's us, the school board, "at a subsequent annual meeting." I don't know how else to read that. If you read it another way, fine.
Well, I guess I'm reading it as we establish it, once it's established, we can't take it out of 41 and use it to buy textbooks unless an annual meeting says, yeah, you can take it out of 41.
Well, substitute textbooks for scorebook, not score, marquee. We've already said in Fund 41, we can only use it for advance, for long-term maintenance of buildings and grounds. That's the way we've been doing it for 10 years. We now want to change that. And you can't change it unless you're at an annual meeting. In our last annual meeting, we did not change it. So we can't spend it. That's why I was hoping that our, when we had the legal counsel there, we said, we can't talk about it, we won't talk about it. We've got a letter to follow. So I'm looking at the letter and you can't do what your motion just did. I think we have to come up with money somewhere else, that's all. That's not all, but it's a biggie.
What was conveyed to us is this is the motion at this meeting by the attorney. And we can always go back and check, you know, I understand the question you have. But that's, that's, I'm just pointing out what the attorney, this is the document they, that, this is their recommendation.
I read what the attorney says, I've looked at what DPI says and their stuff that they put out, and you can only do it at an annual meeting, change that. And we've already had an annual meeting. I don't know how I can do that again.
The Unified School District doesn't have an annual meeting, so in August, we had a budget hearing.
No, but if you notice, they say that in the letter. When they talk about a common school district, substitute unified school district, where it says annual meeting with the voters voting. In a unified school district, you substitute us for the personnel, for the people who can vote at an annual meeting. The school board, back in 19... You know, not many school districts do this, Fund 41, only about 80 school districts. So not a lot of school districts are doing this. But when you do it, you got to go by the rules of the game. Sorry, that's what I was talking about the last meeting.
So the state statute, 124,44, paragraph two, says, "No annual meeting shall be held in a unified school district." So it's sort of contradicting.
So when I read this letter, I put more weight in the, item number three, the analysis, because they go back and recreate the history of where it came from. But the analysis, I think, says we're okay.
Our lawyer says we cannot use that Fund 41 unless we pass a resolution. And I'm saying you cannot pass a resolution that takes effect this year, you have to wait until August. If you notice, the first sentence under legal authority, it says, "The Board of a Unified School District, us, has the powers and duties conferred upon a board and annual meeting of a common school district." Common school district board, a common school district meeting equals a unified school district meeting. The only difference is the voters vote for that in the common and the unified, we vote for. The only difference. And whenever you talk about these statutes, they state this first sentence, the legal authority is there all the time. I'm sorry, but that's the way I read it. I read it that way before.
But we have a Fund 41 right now.
We have 600 and some thousand dollars in the fund right now.
And what we're going to, what we want to use it for is a capital improvement, the sign.
Yeah, but it's in that, I'm sorry, I shouldn't let you finish.
And what I'm reading is, we can go ahead and do that using Fund 41. But what we currently have in Fund 41, we can't transfer it somewhere else until the next annual meeting.
Can't spend somewhere else other than maintenance of grounds and buildings.
And it says capital also.
I'm just saying what the lawyer said, you can't do it unless you change the resolution. He concurs that we cannot do it unless we change the resolution, right?
Right, we have to change.
We have to change the resolution.
We have to clarify it, yes.
And I still say, Mike, if you read what he's given us...
We can change the resolution, but we can't take the money out of 41 and put it into another category.
He's saying you can't do that at all, you have to wait for the annual meeting.
Well, is it, is it change or clarify? That's the distinction, right?
Whatever you want. If clarification is changing.
Clarification isn't changing. It's ruling on what's permissible or not.
I'm not going to go into that.
Isn't that right?
I don't think so.
How can you change something if you're simply defining it by clarifying it?
You're redefining it.
So not redefining it, you're establishing what the definition is.
Like he said, going back to what Matt gave him, the meetings of what, how long ago? A long time ago.
13 years ago.
It was always set for maintenance of buildings and grounds, period.
In the minutes.
In the minutes, yeah. But that's why he said you cannot spend it without changing the resolution.
I'm inclined to read his letter as saying we can change it. I mean, I think had, had there been an issue, I'm assuming we would have been informed of that. And again, he never, the attorney's letter doesn't say we couldn't do it. It says arguably, you know, which is what we're doing now. Do you have anything to add, Mark?
No, it's my understanding, you know, the fact that we could not do it at a board meeting as such. You know, I took Gary's written advice as that we can do it. I can follow up with him on the date.
You can always do it, but you can only do it as an annual meeting. I'm sorry, that's the way I read it and I, I won't be voting for this. I don't think we should be voting for it.
If we get clarification, does it sort of delay things?
I mean, there's two options. You choose not to vote, wait for clarification, or you vote and wait for clarification. If the attorney says you can't do it, then you're going to have to either wait till August or revote. In essence, that's the reason why we went to our attorney is because there was already language there. Sometimes it's, you don't want to change the message or contradict something that's already been said. So that's why we went to his advice for it.
His advice is correct. His advice is correct. You have to vote for, I mean, you have to come with a new resolution.
But he didn't tell us that...
As part of his thing tells us that it can only, the state law, and I think it's somewhere in his write-up, he said it has to do, I'm not going to go through that letter, but somewhere in the write-up, he reaffirms that it has to be done at a annual meeting.
Jim, I just, I don't see it that way. I see if we're just now creating a Fund 41, it would have to be an annual meeting. But we're clarifying what we're going to use Fund 41 for.
We've already clarified that many years ago and every year since we've had Fund 41, which is 10 years, who set us for maintenance of buildings and grounds. Now you want to change that. And I agree with, try to get it changed, but I don't think you can change it this way. I know you can't change it. I feel that I know you can't change it that way. And if you check with DPI, they'll say the same thing. Any change to your intent has to be done at an annual meeting.
Well, why don't we just follow up with Gary and find out? Isn't that the thing to do?
That, that would be one option, yes.
It would be great to have a sign there, but we've got to do it right.
I think we are. I, I understand what you're saying, but we're clarifying what we're using Fund 41 for. We're not saying we're taking money out of 41 and transferring it somewhere else.
We're not transferring it anywhere else.
No, but that's where I see it says...
To pay for it.
Yeah, but I said, that's where I see it says we can't transfer it until we have another annual meeting.
No, no, you're not reading it, I guess. I'm, I'm not reading it. Shall be tied, "Such money shall not be used for any other purpose than what it was originally intended for." And that was buildings and grounds.
But it doesn't say for what it was intended for, it just says out of Fund 41.
The original intent for Fund 41, yeah. Original intent for 41.
Right, and that's what we're, that's what we're re-clarifying. We're not taking the money out of there.
We're taking the money out to pay for something that was never authorized.
And that's why we're clarifying the authorization.
And we can only clarify... And we can only clarify it at an annual meeting.
No, it says we can't transfer it except that it'll have an annual meeting.
Oh, it doesn't, it says you can't pay.
It says...
All money, such money shall not be used for any other purpose or be transferred.
Right, and we're clarifying the purpose.
Amen to that, and you can't do that except changing your, according to the lawyer, you can't do that unless you change the resolution. And you can't change a resolution until you do it at an annual meeting. Something like what I was talking about before. Move the table until we get a resolution, I guess.
There's, there's a motion on the, there's a motion and a second, so they would have to withdraw.
What will this do?
We can vote.
No, there's a motion.
I know there's a motion, but I can ask that motion to be tabled.
Can ask, right, yeah.
I'm asking, I'll need a second for it. And if there's no second, do what you want. I think that's how the Roberts goes.
May I ask, if we delay this, what will, effect will that have on the project?
Well...
Minimal?
He eliminates one option.
Which would be?
Fund Forty-One, if it's not clear.
No, I mean, if we get clarification...
If we get clarification for the next meeting, that isn't gonna set us back up.
The project doesn't, if that's the case, if you wait to vote on the sign, the project doesn't start till the spring.
Well, my thought is, I hope Gary didn't advise us to pass this resolution, knowing that we're gonna do it in this meeting, without knowing that we shouldn't do it.
He told us you can't do it.
But then why would, why would he, why would he recommend us pass that resolution?
Because he thought that maybe that the meeting was coming up, I don't know.
All right, well, I think he should have clarified, you know, this needs to be done at the annual meeting.
I wish he could have too, but we didn't talk to him about it.
Or, this is the resolution that needs to be passed at an annual meeting to, to clarify. But I don't know, maybe, maybe he just missed it, so I guess, I guess, I will withdraw my second and speak to him, I prefer to speak to him further than see if, you know, what his understanding is.
So we don't go on forever and divide this, I withdraw my motion, with hopes that we could still proceed using some...
I would hope he would have something to do, to get around that.
At least we can get started.
But I don't see it, but if he comes up with something, good.
So that we could bring it back next month, in the meantime, get the project rolling, that we could...
I have a hard time with voting on anything on the sign, if we don't know where the money is coming from. I've had that since the very beginning, when we went through it, and we voted on it once, and we approved it, and the consent agenda. Now we go back at it, we're also changing the amount, which will come up later, I guess, again.
Well, I'm not sure how we proceed on this, so if we don't act on Fund Forty-One, then we just...
You can go Fund Ten, then you may go into a deficit for the year, so there's fund balance.
I don't know that we need to go into a deficit for a sign.
I know, that bothers me.
I mean, when money, I thought also of the, what's that, a fund balance, and that's another question, I wouldn't wanna touch it for that. Not thirty thousand, right, thirty thousand.
And I think to use our fund balance for something, we've got a clause there too, don't we have to have a...
Oh, yeah.
Supermajority?
Yeah.
If we're gonna use fund balance.
Well, there could be, you know, let me clarify, you could vote these on our Fund Ten, we just may run out of deficit. I'm not trying to be cute, you know, we're early enough in the year, but there's a chance we could go negative.
Well, I think a why we're not putting money into Fund Forty-One is because we had to hire a special ed teacher, so that's why it's zero. Changing that fund, by the way, but not putting any money in it, I don't know about that, but that's another question. But to come up with thirty thousand dollars now in our budget, I think we've used some money already in some funds.
Well, I sense we're, we have disposed of that issue, so we can go to the sign, 'cause obviously that's what we're discussing now. And if we get the, I'm getting the sense that if it's not Fund Forty-One, then we're probably not going to do it tonight, we're not going to approve anything, so.
It's difficult to approve, I'm sorry.
You know, that, that isn't true. We could actually do A, B's, A, B, and C.
Does that include the bid? Okay.
Sign placement, display, and design.
Yeah, that we can get rid of.
I'm just not sure that's gonna help us at all.
No.
The only thing is, it would give Mr. Devon a chance to say something about it, so. So...
Are you inviting me to this?
I think I am right now, because we seem to be stuck.
Not your lawyer hat.
No, no, I won't offer any comments on this, we're gonna have to object to Fund Forty-One. Thank you for the opportunity of appearing. I sent a letter to Mark, did you conclude that in the materials?
They got it on a previous meeting.
Okay. And I, that pretty much says most of the things with any intelligence that I had to say. I am, I am not, I'm not objecting to the existence or the location, I'm not existing to, objecting to the existence of a sign, but I am, I'm very concerned about the location that was proposed for the sign. I'm not here tonight just because I'm a grumpy old man, I've lived across the street from the site here for thirty years this coming year. I'm there before the school was built, after the school was built, I was the vice chairman of the Citizen Advisory Committee that suggested locating the school there, and I've had a lot of subcommittees for the board, for the district. I have six sons, my wife and I have six sons who all graduated from Lincoln Middle School and High School. And as I point out in my letter, this intersection is at least two times a day the busiest intersection in Whitewater. And as you know, from driving that intersection, you've got three choices in each direction you go. You can turn left, you can go straight, you can turn right. You've gotta deal with children that are walking to and from the high school to the middle school, buses that are going from the high school after dropping off students to the middle school, and you've got bikes that are passing, and it's just a, and as I suggested in my letter, those stop signs aren't really used for stopping, they're used more for slowing down. Now, thank God, I'm not aware of any accidents or incidents that have happened at the intersection since the stop sign's been placed. One of the city councilmen called me at the time that they placed them and asked if we thought that they'd be good, they'd be observed, and we said, yeah, and the one that's close to the middle school is, seems to be working, and slows traffic down. But the nature of the sign you're talking about is one which is intended to, has whole purposes to attract attention. If it's a digital sign, it's streaming, it's informational, it has no purpose if it doesn't attract attention. And if the place that you decide to put this sign is on that corner, approximate or at the location where you all work tonight, even though you couldn't see too well, I could see the two over there, you know, that, that is gonna look like a billboard on that corner, with a seven foot by seven foot sign, to people who are turning into the school and people that are traveling back and forth. And its intention is to attract attention, therefore it becomes a distraction for the people that are driving. And what you don't need at that intersection is a distraction. Now, there's a beautiful campus, the school's got a great looking campus, and there are places, even if, I don't know exactly where the power source runs from to that location, I know that that's a consideration because of cost, but if you could move that sign back about a hundred feet from where it is, or where the proposed site was, which is right, you know, within thirty feet of the corner itself, you could see it from multiple directions, you'd be able to, people could look at it a lot more safely than where it's being suggested now. Or, as I suggested in my letter, if it's placed where the school sign is that tells us how long it spends if we want a state championship, that would even be better, because you could see things coming and going on Walworth Avenue, and students would be able to see it. If you had turned it off during the time that it's busy, well then you're, you're actually not accomplishing your purpose, which is to convey, communicate information to the students at the school, because they won't see it. If it's off during the time they're coming and going, they won't see it, they don't come out at lunchtime to look at the sign, they don't wear, you know, they don't come back by the school later on in the day to see what's going on. So I, I'm really concerned, ten fifteen school buses coming and going every morning, it's middle school time, it's the same as the high school time, traffic backs up there for nearly a block and all of that. If you put it where it's intended, if it's an angled sign again, and I think one of the alternatives is to have it perpendicular to Walworth, so it's visible from more direction. But if you drive that, that way, you'll see that really where it's proposed, if it's an angled sign, that corner, that close to the corner, there's really only two directions that you're gonna be coming from to be able to see it. One is, if you're approaching the intersection of Elizabeth and Walworth, from east on Walworth, you'll be able to see, when you get to that corner, if you're coming south on Elizabeth Street, you'll be able to see it as you're approaching. But if you're coming from the high school, going toward the middle school, you won't be able to see it, because it'll be to your left, and you can't turn back and look. If you're coming east on Walworth Avenue, you won't be able to see it, because it's angled, and so you're really, you're only gonna be able to see it from one or two directions, which again, seems to defeat the purpose of it. Also, you've got the curved nature of Elizabeth Street, as you proceed south on Elizabeth Street, not only do you have to worry about stop signs, and other cars, and people, and children going to and from, and bikes, you've gotta pay attention to the curve as you're going down as you're approaching where the high school is. And it just strikes me, from my experience of seeing that every single day, that that can be a dangerous thing to have with children, and I really hate to see anything happen as a result of there being a sign there that's attracting their attention or distracting them from what they're doing. And so I think, I think a better placement for it would be a hundred feet from where you guys were tonight, closer to the school, you could still see it from, in fact, you'd see it from a lot more directions, because it'd be farther away. It wouldn't be a billboard on the corner, really, it'd be something that would be farther away, would look nicer, I think, or where the sports sign is, because then you could see it coming and going on Walworth Avenue, and you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be unfortunately distracting with people who are trying to negotiate that intersection. So that's really all I had, I appreciate the time. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, I'll leave you to make the decision. Go ahead or not.
Well, we could act on these, but I don't see a lot of purpose in doing it, so if anybody has any other comments on the sign.
I guess I, I'm, is it appropriate to ask sort of the family to weigh in? And this is sort of blown up in ways that I never envisioned it anyways.
The original intent, yeah.
Yeah. Can we ask that, or?
Absolutely, if you want to say anything, you're more than welcome.
I guess the only comment I have, and I guess I have no comments, I have thoughts, but I have not addressed the rest of the family members, and I, I know my thought, but I don't always think the way the rest of the family does, so, no comment.
Okay. If you have one, will you let us know?
Oh, you don't have to worry about that.
Okay, good.
That's not a problem. And I'm sure, you'll probably receive lots of phone calls from various family members. The biggest concern the family has right now is, it's going on two years, and we've had people donate at the funeral, asking us, what did you do with your money? What did you do with our money? What, you know, when's the sign going up? And we were told by past people who weren't here at the time, that this would be the end of, beginning of the school year. We were asked before Nate left, if he could have the money that we had in an account, so we could get it going, and we trustingly gave the money. I, you know, I guess the question I have is, and I don't wanna sound like a poor sport, I don't wanna sound like I'm taking my ball and going home, but what does one have to do to get their donation back? Because we could find other places to give the money to kids. My dad wanted the money for kids, and we can find other places that won't create this kind of headache for a lot of people. I, I realized, I had no idea this was gonna create this big of headache for so many people. We just thought it was a matter of doing a nice gesture, and, I mean, I know there were things that had to be done, but...
You're not alone.
Right, I mean, I'm not being a poor sport about it, but I, I mean, I hate seeing people walk through this much time at a meeting, when we could find other places, other organizations to get the money into kids' hands.
I think there's gonna be a sign there, I really do. Well, I don't know when, but we've gotta do it right.
And I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying that this, we have community members who, who are questioning us, and we don't know what to say. That's all I can say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In going back to the items that we have for the sign, can we not go ahead and do these, so that when we find that we have funding monies, we can get going?
We'd have to have a meeting, a regular meeting with an agenda posted, whether, first we have to find out whether we can do it or not, the Fund Forty-One, and then we're gonna have to vote on it to change it, so we can do it all at that time, 'cause otherwise it's pretty much meaningless if we don't do it.
Or come up with the money somewhere else.
How much money are we talking about the district has, needs to put into it right now? Approximately, about thirty thousand, I think?
About thirty.
About thirty.
Do we have thirty thousand in any maintenance items?
So at the beginning of the year, you never know what you're going to run into. So there's a maintenance budget, but we don't know if we get to the end of the year, if there are needs or a need that would...
And those things wouldn't, and those things wouldn't, couldn't come out of Fund Forty-One?
If they fit the current definition, or a revised definition, yes.
I mean, the current definition we have, it sounds like some of the items that we have in our maintenance funds could come out of Fund Forty-One right now, and we could use our current maintenance items towards the sign.
Sure, so one example of the upfront is the skylight, that's in Fund Ten.
And couldn't that come out of Fund Forty-One? Freeing up the money to get us going on the sign.
It should've come out of Fund Forty-One.
Right.
And so until we get, was in the, the referendum?
No, it was bid with the referendum, we did not use referendum dollars, 'cause it was a...
The insurance.
It had, well, we had insurance, but, no, we did not, we just bid it, so that we could get the benefit of a...
What about the roofing? Could we have done the roofing on Forty-One? That's what our intent was all along.
Yeah, that would've been an option, but, you know, we have two million in roofing, so, I mean, it, it could've been...
Six hundred thousand could've been taken then.
Well, we could've used, or half, I, I wouldn't, you know...
But would the money for the skylights, if we took that out of Fund Forty-One, would free the money in Fund Ten to get us started on the sign? And then we can redo the Fund Forty-One definition, when we can redo it, or get...
Or not.
Or not.
Or not.
Yeah.
In fact, I think Fund Forty-One... In fact, I think Fund Forty-One probably shouldn't exist after next year.
Or if it does, it's going to be different.
Because we already put all the money on the roofing that was.
Well, I, I don't, the, the challenge is, is that we use roofing as an example. And what I'm going to point out is that we have two million dollars of deferred, or one point two, I'm sorry. And so there's always going to be that next project. So the Forty-One, you know, a, a separate conversation is how big do you want it to be?
So how much should we put in the skylight out of Fund Ten?
It was a hundred and fifty-three thousand minus ballparking fifty to sixty thousand of insurance. So roughly a hundred thousand net.
So could that come out of the six hundred thousand we have in Fund Forty-One right now?
I mean, a retroactive transfer, is that what you're talking about? Just a whole keeping?
We haven't paid the bill yet, I'm sure. So if that came out of Fund Forty-One, we then have money in Fund Ten to proceed with this project.
Would you propose taking the entire net skylight cost out of Fund Forty-One or only like thirty thousand?
Whatever we need to get this project going. Is that a budgetary thing we can do and?
So we could accomplish the same thing.
Tonight, so we've got to do it tonight.
Yeah, and it's, in my mind, we're not finagling anything. We're just doing budget stuff that we would normally do anyway. And legally, the skylight could be either Ten or Forty-One.
So that's not anything we act on, that's just something that you can take care of.
They'll come up in the revised budget.
Well, we have to approve buying it.
That's why I say if we go back to, to item eight, we should be able to proceed with item eight today, knowing that we could fund it then using Fund Ten because the skylight will be coming out of Fund Forty-One. Well, let's go.
Yeah, the reason, I just, we've talked about Forty-One and people have asked, why haven't we talked about others? You know, for me, it's, we didn't have a plan for it and that's why I'm waiting for it to have a plan for it. Is this reasonable? Yes, but to go back, we didn't take it out of the referendum dollars for purpose, so that's why. Because a capital maintenance item, since we had the referendum going on, that's why we put the skylight replacement in Fund Ten and also.
It just, it just looks like it's in the referendum because it's mentioned several times in our.
Well, it's, it's, it's separate though.
Okay, but it's with the referendum stuff.
Well, it was bid, correct.
Had Colin do it is why, so, yeah, so. Well, tell me what's wrong with this idea.
So then. So then the, what we would just be, you know, assuming is, is that Fund Ten, we would hit, start our sign discussion, that would come out of Fund Ten and then Matt would provide a, when you get ready to adopt the budget, then he would discuss the, the change in taking, you know, paying for the skylight with Fund Forty-One.
Sounds good.
He could go over, keys crossed that way.
Not something will happen.
But I, I will also get Gary's clarification just to make sure.
Sure, because we should resolve this at the annual meetings.
I participated in eight annual meetings and I can tell you that there's things that you can do in an annual meeting, but you can also have a special meeting, you know, there's different things, but it's not the only place. That, that you can do, I'm not going to get, it doesn't matter because it doesn't apply to us.
All right, then we're on to marquee sign placement, so.
I, I think when we talked this evening, we talked about a north-south.
Yes.
Direction of the sign, not, not facing, but building of the sign. The comments are made, maybe if we moved it back a little bit further from the street. I, I don't know if we want to put it way, way back. But I think where we were talking about tonight.
We're down further on Walworth, maybe?
Yeah, where we're talking tonight is where the old sign, that's still a good fifty, sixty, seventy feet off the street.
And just remember it has to be blessed by the.
Yeah, that's another thing.
Yeah, wherever the plan convention says how far we can go.
That's out of our control, but. So how, how do we describe that motion?
About, about here.
Placement at the former sign.
North-south.
North-south viewing east-west.
So square.
Perpendicular to Walworth.
Right, there you go.
Someone willing to make that motion?
So, so are we, how far off the intersection are, are we now? Do we, do we believe there might be a, a traffic concern there with the sign?
I mean, it, yeah, maybe. I mean, there's kids walking across that.
Well, I think the city's going to tell us that.
Well, that's good, yeah, somebody should.
They may recommend a different placement.
They may recommend a distance.
Correct.
Yeah, we should.
Away from that intersection.
They've done that for many places.
Yeah, what, the deeper you go, what, what we forget about on curves is the deeper you go in, the further back it's going to have to be.
Right, because of the curve.
Because of the curve, yeah. If you're on a highway, it's point on center fifty feet, but we're not on a highway.
Second, will you take me to the second?
No, we did not.
On second.
Is there any, I don't want to even ask, is there any other discussion?
We alleviated the safety concerns with our placement recommendation.
We're going to defer to the city on safety concerns.
And I think a lot of Mr. Devitt's.
Because the police department can get involved and that fire department, everybody gets involved in it if we see something like that going on.
But I think the north-south orientation alleviates a lot of Mr. Devitt's concerns also, so. Jody?
Davis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Stuart.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Brunner.
Give me a minute. So we're north-south along Walworth. Am I, do I understand this correctly?
Yeah, right where the pile of mulch is, is the best way I can describe it. Not a good motion though.
Well, we drew, drew the line in the sand, you know.
The tree.
Yes.
All right, next up is the video screen type.
If we're going to do it, let's do it right.
I'm, I'm with you there.
Two-sided, oh, it is very two-sided.
Yep.
Oh, good.
As much as I like Washington's bright amber, this is our marquee school, rather. We could do it in red once in a while.
So all of these were for two-sided, does that seem right?
We have on the bottom, in the end, we, we give you a total breakdown. But right now, we're just talking about the types so that the motion, recommended motion would be to approve a two-sided color sign, color video display at this point.
Can I just, oh, somebody want a second? I have a discussion.
I would second it.
Thank you.
Do we have a plan in place for programming? This, like, who manages that and how it gets updated and?
Yes, there will be a plan. No, we don't because we need the sign approved by two entities first. But yes, it's informational. If you look at the city guidelines, they have expectations on what's there. So it, it won't be happy birthday, Mr. Barons. So in the future, happy next birthday, gentlemen.
Thirty.
Thirty, oh, okay, I know.
Is that what you were asking, Kelly? Or who's going to do it?
Yes, well, and who's going to do it?
And there'll be, we'll need to have a, a primary person and a secondary.
Right. And it should be noted that the gentleman that came from the sign company today to talk to us about it said it can be controlled, the brightness, so it doesn't have to be at two in the morning.
Should be off.
Yes, it could be turned off, the brightness can be controlled and computerized.
So there, what I would suggest that there, for operational purposes, there be a normal. If there's no events, off at, you know, seven or eight, I'm just making talk. If there's an event, at the end of the event, say Jeff roughly nine o'clock, we can turn off at nine o'clock. Or we just have one, you know, nine o'clock every day or eight o'clock, something like that.
Okay, now this cost does not include the structure.
No, that's the pedestal.
It's just the video.
This is the video.
Video piece.
Right.
And this is above the donation route, right?
Yeah, what, what is the donation?
Well, we're just, right now, we're just selecting the type of sign.
Well, I know, but it's going to cost money, so, and we have price in there.
Matt, you have above there, so donate, how much, how, what's our donation?
I have a little sticker mark, it's roughly eighty-six hundred that we've received.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the, what's the life expectancy of these signs? Indeed, I guess I should have asked him earlier, is it twenty years probably?
I.
Pedestal probably lasts forever, huh?
Pedestal, done right, lasts forever, yes.
But the electronics.
I'd say that ten to twenty. I would hope twenty. About twenty.
Is there any other discussion? Questions, clarification? Jody?
Judd.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Stuart.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
All right, next is the design. And there, we have two options, you know.
They're not in the packet.
No, they're in the past packet. One had the curved top and one was just flat across the top, so.
Jody will post it. So the difference in price is the curved component. It's just, it's not square, so it requires shaping.
They're both backlit, right?
Correct.
So.
We had issues with like, I guess I didn't see it.
I think the lettering would fit easier in the squared one rather than the curved one.
I agree. I like the square.
Yeah.
See, the building itself doesn't have a lot of curves.
Yeah. Do you have a picture of the square?
Oh.
Just square it off. Plus the lettering could be longer or larger because you don't have to squeeze it under the curve.
Just the la, the June board meaning. Well, no, key scroll, no, there's a.
But that's.
That is still with a cap, it's the concept, but.
Yeah. That's not what the base would look like, but that's what the sign.
The letters could be larger on the square one rather than.
Wait, that doesn't at all.
It's a square that all.
Can we get away without putting the aquatic center in there?
What's that?
Can we get away without putting the aquatic center?
I prefer not.
You're putting up a sign, right? Aquatic center is.
Way down at the end, but this was kind of.
The only thing is with the square one, I think there was a question about, or that. Well, maybe just a board.
No, it's, it's the same concept here. You just square off.
Yeah, draw it right across the top.
Like the, okay.
It's the same pedestal.
Yeah, if you can't find it, Jody, that's all right.
I don't know.
That's okay.
I don't know if there was one.
I don't, I don't remember seeing.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, that, okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, that, that would be.
Close.
No, it's the top one.
You want the top one?
Yeah.
But it doesn't.
Well, something like that.
Well.
It would still be capped.
Yeah, it'd still be capped, it's just, wouldn't have the curve down, it'd have a flat cap.
Correct.
Would you bring that right side up to the, up there?
Go back to the curved one. Okay, and just, okay, instead of curving down, it's just going to go straight across.
Change the lettering.
Yeah, but you, how far up is your right wall done though?
It'd be the same.
To me, it just looks like half a sign unless you've got two pillars, that's a.
On a square?
Yeah.
I think we need to see a final design.
I like the curve, but you'll forgive me because twenty-four hundred bucks more is.
I prefer the square.
I don't know, to me, that looks modern, I guess, but I don't, that's just.
Let me think outside the box.
That's my opinion too, and the rain won't sit on top of it.
Exactly. Pitch right off, every good roof has a pitch to it. Except for schools. Maybe the snow will even slide off, that'd be great. Yeah, for me, I'm a.
One pillar or two pillars? How high are the pillars? Those are the decisions, guys.
Go back.
It's just one pillar.
Uh-huh, and I, I think with the round, it's got to be one pillar.
Yeah. I feel like we just needed a, a final, like, choice, A, B, and C. Boom, and then just flipping back and forth.
There you go.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's the square one, yeah. I just put a cap on.
Well, with the two pillars, we didn't have a spot to put the aquatic center sign.
Right.
And does that open it up to more problems with the, or is there anything like that, less safe, being safe? I don't know. Seems like the, the one pillar, to me, seems like that would be better. A little more secure.
And solid.
One pillar more secure?
More ground contact, so it's a place that would be better.
Right.
Samsung, two pillars.
Well, we're going to get into preference here, so I think we just need to.
Well, does the family have a preference? I mean, no, no.
Do you personally have a preference?
No.
No.
I don't like the brown, I guess, I, I'm not crazy about the. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, I just want the sign.
Right.
Okay, square sign and we save twenty-four hundred dollars.
We all win.
Two pillar or one pillar?
The one pillar like it is.
Is anybody happy?
No, I'm not happy.
I'm not happy there.
So maybe, maybe we, maybe we found the right meeting. Compromised.
I like two pillars. That's what you see, you don't see a sign with one pillar hanging out.
Does white water or aquatic center go on that one?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just, the two pillars cost.
A final one.
I, let's, let's find a design before we talk about. Yeah, because I think you're going to have to fill, I, so what's supposed to be filled in underneath the?
The benefit of having the one pillar versus the two is that the aquatic center sign would be smaller. I, I, I point that out just because you can make it smaller within the bricks as opposed to reaching between. It can be blank, so I may be, I'm not trying to misrepresent, but there's a shorter amount of, of the sign.
But why don't we put the base underneath that? Why don't they drop in and fill it in under it so it's a solid looking sign, not hung by two pillars? I mean, why don't you do it like the top, just add the pillar?
I kind of like that, actually.
Recess the brick and then you can still put your sign there. The problem is now you've got more brick. The world only knows where the cost goes. Now we lose everything by, by ditching the circle top.
Oh, there's, there's, if you go to the two pillar, then you're going to have more. The power goes up the middle.
Brian's talking about.
The one on the low.
Fill it in, more like a U.
Yeah.
I like that.
Just an extra course on the side of the top one.
And it should be recessed slightly.
And we don't have a bid on that, but.
Yeah, and JP Cullen took it from the monument signs that they built. So the, you know, whether it's curved or flat, they took it from the monument signs.
Were they two pillar or one pillar?
One.
Cullen?
They've got a strict policy, only one pillar.
They designed it yet, but we've got a bid on it.
No, they have, no, they have provided all the specs.
But not the one Brian's talking about, which is two pillar filled in in the middle. I kind of like, that looks solid to me.
Correct.
It's that, the bottom was filled in on the bottom one.
I like that bottom.
What about in the middle though, filled in, and then you have it for aquatic center?
I don't like the end of the aquatic.
You don't?
If you don't fill it in, you're going to have the chances of people going under it.
Part of the wire.
Part of the wire, my God.
You could have a hanging aquatic center with an arch on it, that's kidding. Now you get your curve in there and your aquatic.
Yeah, we could easily do that.
I see nothing wrong with the top.
At least what we save from not going curved, we, we're going to spend in JP Cullen for making the, the sign base.
I'll check with her, if you like a square one filled in, like the lower one, you know, it can be built. I'll check with it. If you like a square one filled in, like the lower one, you know, it can be built.
And it makes sense because the power comes up through the middle, so, I mean, you can run it up underneath the sign, right? Well, it depends on where you put the pillars. Come up to one of the pillars. I mean the sign, I think.
Right.
The video board, so.
So we're looking at the top sign with a left pillar with it.
Yeah, yes.
We do that?
So a U, so basically it's a U now? Is that a fair statement?
Square, square sign with-
I'm, I'm clarifying, I'm not-
Which one? The bottom?
The top one with the pillar on the left as well.
You want the pillar over there too?
That's what you're saying.
Two pillars.
I don't know.
Oh, amen.
Yep.
That's good. Okay.
Alright, someone decipher that for us.
Two pillar square sign, so moved.
Second. And, excuse me, you were gonna say some, you were gonna say discussion.
I was gonna say, do you want it to be solid, but he's already made the motion, but I'm trying to clarify his motion.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yes, as the top one, two pillar and square sign, as the top had a pillar.
Alright, did, was there a second?
Yes, I did.
Okay. More discussion? Can we talk about the aquatic center sign, part of it? It's not gonna be a humongous thing that was on there before. We've had several renditions of the aquatic sign. The smaller the better, it still can be visible. And not elongated. I think you, you agreed to just have it called the Aquatic Center. And not Aquatic Center and-
Right.
Whatever. So. Well, I think our intent is to, to make it-
For the whitewater, yeah, whitewater aquatic.
You know, I don't know if it's gonna be exactly like that, but it's, we want the sign to be focused on the Whitewater High School. And just an informative aquatic center. Right. Yeah. And the aquatic center can be smaller than that. In fact, the width of the letters on the video, he said there were what, seven or six? He said six, but you can do twelve. It's programmable, so. Well, that might be too small for that, but one of the, is it six inches or? Oh, that's too big. Yeah, that's probably bigger than what it is on that drawing even, so. But the placement, if we use that color scheme, has to be about there. We don't wanna color, cover up our nice red accent, so. Does it have to be white? I don't think it has to be white, but. Could it be a little gray with black and still be pronounced? So that it fits in with the brick more than it does.
Yeah, the color bothers me too. I wish, I don't care, maybe in steel or, I don't know what they can do, but it should be.
I also have to ask the-
I don't like the-
The lettering. So it's Whitewater High School? Is that, I'm just asking for, I've got the-
Whitewater High School, home of the Whippets.
Home of the Whipp-
So we want all that. I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, we did that last time.
Okay, I'm just-
And the whitewater aquatic center is gonna look smaller when we put a left pillar on it anyway.
Yeah.
So, so conceptually, something like eight inches tall by four feet?
Probably and not so white.
Yes, it's, it's dangerous.
It's small, but it can still be visible from the intersection.
The same size, it's gonna look smaller.
There is a request to make it smaller, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
No.
We need to see it, like marked up.
I agree we need to see it, and I agree that somehow the perception here that it is much larger than I think it should be, that's all. And I think dulling the background and not having it white will take some of that size away, I think. Can we, can we deal with that later? Just approve the sign and make this-
You can do the aquatic center later, so, okay, not the prolongness. So you just would like a couple versions of scale on the sign.
And colors and fonts.
Well, we agree that it's light gray with black. I mean, the contrast is the key.
Yeah.
The, the less contrast, the further you can see it. So the, what Dennis had told me, even this white sign, and I'm not promoting, you can only see this white sign from the intersection.
That's fine.
So it will be less.
So that people-
But my, yeah, but it, okay, I'm just trying to make sure that it's not less than the intersection. That's, that's where I'm.
Any other discussion? Jody?
We're working on it, Pam.
Brian?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Bruner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes. And now the purchase, so, did you have your calculator out, Matt? So we know, we know what our options are, that's already been approved, so I don't think we need that in the motion, just approve it as pers- as the purchase of the sign. We haven't approved-
We don't know what your cost though.
Not to exceed?
We know the sign costs, we don't know the brick cost.
And we don't know what the bid, what, what that bid is. We know what the bid is, but does it include everything that we've said tonight? I don't know.
Well, you added more brick, so the cost would be with the pedestal. That would change.
Well, and we changed the, well, the aquatic center, that's gonna be-
That's only gets equal to or smaller, right? It, that, that costs, that costs us more, um, labor than, than material.
Well, he is just the sign right now.
I understand that. I, we're just, the question was asked, so I, yeah.
So we're at twenty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars without the pedestal.
Wow.
It's the bottom number there, twenty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven.
But of the bid for the, the pedestal, do, are we gonna, is it just masonry cost that?
Electric, electric is donated, so it's, that would be to construct it as presented. I would suggest that you may have to go up to twenty, not to exceed. We're not gonna spend any more, I, I get that message.
Right.
But, and if it came over a certain amount, then I have to come back to you. I mean, that's the-
So.
Cause it's eleven three, and of that fifty-one hundred is masonry. Which would probably be the biggest addition.
Are you looking at the bids now?
Yeah, why, how come under B we-
We just did.
How come under B under the, the display, that doesn't, what am I missing there? That's just the-
That's just a comparative. It's-
Burley was the lowest bid, Jim, that's the one I can have, so.
The best exam, the, the costs are in D, the updated costs are in D.
In D, so ignore the B.
So it's-
And I understand, Brian, answer your question. That's the sign, that's not the installation of the sign, buy the sign guy, that's just the sign cost, was the nineteen-
The twenty-four five thirty-seven.
Twenty-four five thirty-seven is everything related to the sign, not the pedestal, if I can use that term.
Do we have a motion on that?
But we have a donation to offset some of that, or?
Yes.
But we need root-
You still gotta buy the sign.
Right, well, I was thinking, that's a lot, I mean,
Yeah.
People are gonna wonder why we're having something else.
Okay, but under B, it's nineteen six forty-four plus a thousand installations. So what am I missing between B and D?
The piping for the electrical.
This is-
Add components.
That's just the video you're looking at.
It's just the video.
Not the-
Not the sign sign.
Yeah, the part that says Whitewater High School is-
You gotta add, you gotta add above it. One side, two side.
So where were the prices? I saw them today when I was looking through things for the masonry.
That's under E.
That's E.
Oh, no wonder I can't find it.
And that, it's at, at page four of seven is with the work package that breaks down the total cost of it. Excavation, concrete, masonry, and landscaping.
Do we have a motion yet for D?
Yeah.
I move to approve the purchase of the flat top full color sign for twenty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Yeah. What if we, give me some background of what you're saying. This is for the video screen and the top part. Okay. That says Whitewater High School, home of the Whippets. You were losing me there.
I'm sorry, Judd, I was jumping ahead, sorry.
Yes. Anybody else? Jody?
Stuart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Bruner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And the last is the sign construction, so.
So originally we had a not to exceed.
Well, the, the quote is just under twelve. I put, I recommended just a buffer, not because we wanna spend more, but now we've looked to spend more, so I just put that as a point. I would suggest a couple thousand higher. It, it all depends if you want me to have to, us to have to come back. So if you say twenty thousand, we're not gonna spend a nickel more than what you asked for. But if you do that, that'll, I don't think it would cost that much. You know, if you cut the masonry in half, if you wanted to cut it tighter, eight, we're probably gonna be able to do it for about fifteen. If we have a little latitude up to eighteen, that would be appreciated, understanding that we're not adding anything to, to it.
I move to approve JP Cullen to build the brick pedestal, a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Good second there.
There more discussion?
Yes.
It's, it's just the idea. Our policy says that we should have three bids. We say that JP Cullen bid on this. They actually didn't bid on it, they bid on, they did bid on it.
No, we, no, I said they bid to be our construction manager.
Right, I know that.
Yeah, and so as we-
That's under the referendum, and this is not under the referendum.
We're able to get referendum dollar, the pricing based on, through JP Cullen on this. This isn't a, this is because they're here. This isn't an outside bid.
Our policy says we should have three bids on all purchases. And I seek what, I, I recognize what's, what's going on. I'm always at a loss to, when we have a policy to go against it.
Are we going against it if, if we bid this out to the, to them being our construction manager?
Without any bids from anybody else?
No, construction manager for this whole referendum project.
But it's not a referendum project.
But we're using referendum bid hourly, so we're getting, we're getting a benefit of, we're getting identified.
We know that for sure. We know that somebody else can't come in and underbid Cullen, is what you're saying.
No, I didn't say that. No, I said identified that we know what the costs are. And so they bid and we selected them based on the cost to move forward in a bidding. So when we went through the whole bidding process with all, all the people on June second.
Yeah, but that was for twenty-three million.
Right, but we, we get prices and then we can do work based on the prices.
I understand that, and my question is, can someone do it cheaper or not, when you said?
No, I didn't say that. No, I-
But, but that would happen. You would find out if you followed the policy and had three bids for this. Because that bid that Cullen did is separate, and they're able to do a funding because they're here. I understand that. And that, it makes sense. I understand that also. But I also know that our policy says, when you do this, get three bids. Make sure you're getting the best bang for the buck, if you will. I don't mean to be-
No, but my clarifying question is, did, the belief, the question is, did they go through a bid process to be contacted? To, to be our construction manager? And if people don't agree with that, then, yeah, then we have to-
Well, yes, but there's a hell of a lot of difference.
But this is different. This is about a sign, so he's saying we need three bids for a pedestal.
This is about a sign and not- Twenty-three million. And it makes sense that they might be able to do it, but when I ask the question, you can't really, and I get, I understand you really don't know until you have three bids. And our policy says three bids. Well, we voted on this before, we didn't have three bids either, so, I mean, you've done, we've done, we have done it before.
Well, with something that's expensive, we should-
Is, is Cullen bidding the job? They, they're gonna bid this job, just like they bid their other jobs, right? We're just employing them as a general here? Or no?
We know what the costs are based on the bids in, in units. So they, they might, you know, what's the, what's the efficiency for us? They don't have mobilization cost. I, I mean, you know, you asked about the same-
If you don't have mobilization cost, somebody locally can do it.
Well, there'd always be mobilization costs because they're coming on site. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not intending to split hairs. If you'd like three bids, we'll get three bids. You know, the que- but-
I, I really don't like three bids, but I like to follow the policy that says three bids. There was a reason why this board said that, and it was primarily to have the public realize that we are doing the best we can to find the lowest bid. This case, we're not. So if we had a motion?
They're proposing this as a change order, as opposed to a bid.
It's not a referendum.
Like, you just get three bids, let's make sure we're, I mean, this is an expensive project, so.
Yeah, the, the, the project won't get built. This, I'm just being clear now.
Right.
And I, that, that's okay. I'm just saying that that, that then this project gets a delay till spring. I'm just being clear. It, it's, the clear, I understand the clarity with the, the bidding thing.
Right.
The, the clarity that I was looking for, was it acceptable? And if it's not, then it's not, we'll get two more, that's fine. But then we're gonna have to change, we'll, we'll go back and do that too.
But, what would we have to change? What if we approved the money to build it? Get the bids, because we still have to go to the city, correct, with the design? So, I guess we'd still have to approve who we hire.
Right, I wouldn't, I would, I would approve both. I'm not saying we've ch-
I think it's kinda crucial to keep faith with what our processes are. Jesus.
Cullen did it as an add-on to the other recent report they're doing.
Sounds like I'm here.
It therefore is not a bidded up project.
What's that?
It's not a bidded up project.
No.
As a result.
Well, it doesn't matter if we need three, if it was bid or not.
Well, it's- I, I guess I'm just saying legally, it's not a bid, it's a proposed change order, which then does not violate our policies.
The change order has to be from the item that has been on the referendum. This sign has not been on the referendum, so it can be a change order. It's not a change order for Cullen because they never envisioned this. Well, I, I think it's the other way around. I think it is a change order for them because they're adding onto this goal.
Yeah.
Okay, so you may look at it like that. Yeah. The money is not coming, or whatever. We just don't have the bids.
I don't know where you go. I, I always worry too, if you have put in a change order and you're not requesting them to bid it, they've already bid something else, that they put their numbers together and those are your numbers, so. You know.
I mean, it's October. If the city approved it, when's our next meeting? Could it even get started now?
I guess, I, I've tried not to confuse it. We can get two bids and go from there. I'm just pointing out, uh, it's just a timeline thing, that's my only statement.
But isn't it a timeline thing anyway? I mean, it's already late October.
The windows, they're, you know, assuming weather's good, they're, they're optimistic. If you get into December, yeah, stuff, yes, we're right at the end of the window.
So if we pass a motion, putting a limit on the money, have our three bids by Friday? Do we have to vote on the cullen?
No, there's a time, time essence in bidding.
Right. I, I guess, thanks, Matt, and maybe I didn't say it correctly. They've bid out their packages to subs. Does that, does that meet the board's expectation of a bid? So, so they already, that's, that's why I agree, Jim, with what you're saying. I'm just clarifying one last time. They bid everything out to subs. And so these, this bid package for the referendum, because they're doing work here. And if it doesn't meet it, I'm fine. But they bid everything out. And then they awarded this, the bits, um, bid packages to all the subs. So it's already been bid for, for the win.
But those bid packages are for big, a lot of work.
Right, and that's an economy of scale for us.
I understand that.
Okay.
Can it be done cheaper by somebody else is the question? I don't know.
Yeah, there, there is no guarantee you're getting the best price when you, after something's been bid, when you then say, okay, I would like this done. Then they're free to quote you whatever, you know, whatever the fee is for a bid.
No, they have to, no, they're held to the bid price that they gave us.
So, so much a linear foot for footing, so much for the, per square foot for brick.
But that's for all the stuff that is being done in the smallest, with brick and stuff.
I could not go through their breakdown close enough. Are you looking at it now, Steve?
Yeah.
What they're charging for particular footage and things. If it's identical to what they bid on the other stuff, I have a problem going forward.
It's the only reason why I brought it forward. Otherwise, I agree that we need three. That's why we've gone out and got them. That's-
So we've got, sure, you've got so many feet of footing, so many feet of subwall right forward, so many feet of masonry. If, if those numbers are the same.
But I don't know how they can do that on a small piece.
So they're going to come out, they're going to excavate that.
Well, they've got to break down my hardware and all of that, my equipment, backhoe, compactor.
No, let me ask them.
They've got, they've got it by brick.
Do you know how many, how much it's hard?
Concrete caps, I mean, it's, it's all right in there.
Do we know, is, is, is Cullen screwed doing the work or have they got, you know, leaving them?
There, there's no subcontractor work in there.
No, they're, they're going to do it. They're going to, yeah.
They're, so, they're going to do it.
Right, and if I'm reading this correct, on page three, it started out with, this was a sign for Lincoln Elementary, so there's, so they bid it out as part of the original referendum. So that when I, so to give you a point-
The design-
They, they flopped it over.
Right, it, it's, right, that was part of this-
So they bid a comparable piece.
And so the change orders is the location at this point. The pricing was probably in the original pricing, if I'm reading this correctly, because that was from on page three, but that's where it started out, was the Lincoln sign. So am I correct in assuming that?
It's a different sign.
Right. Yes, but I, my assumption is, I've not seen a date on this doc, on that document, but my assumption is that's the pricing from the original refer-
It, it was the same post.
Correct. That's how I'm reading it, so.
Or it ended up being the same.
And I think we've done things like that in the past, take advantage of.
Right.
And we're sure that that will be the lowest.
What's that?
And we're sure that that's the lowest.
Well, we are not sure that's the lowest. That's the issue, so.
That's the problem.
Yeah, has it been to-
You can't be positive until you rebid, even if with, even with an existing bid, you can't be sure that it's haven't changed in the meantime.
But we've not always gone with the lowest bidder either.
I'm not saying that. We can do that.
But I think we have a history with-
You have to have three bids. You can't decide that that's the lowest or the highest or the middle until you have two others. And then you make your decision.
But there were concrete bid out, they were the lowest at the, on the bid day.
For a lot of-
I d, I, I'm I just can't believe that by getting two more bids, I mean, even if we went in for it tonight, the city's got to go through it, so let's just get two bids and just see.
How long do we know, how long does the city will take to?
Because I'm sure, they can't just, there's a subcommittee, right, that has to meet and then we've got to get in the actual real design that we just all approved, like, it's a, it's a process.
All right, we're prepared for the, but that's, the sign guy will do all that. That's, that's part of the package.
Yeah, but it has to, I mean, when's our next meeting? I don't know.
They're, probably second week in November. They have a regular meeting.
Okay, well, I don't know, then it's December. I mean, I said it could, I mean, I'm not convinced that it could happen this year anyway, so just get two bids. And make sure we're doing due diligence. It's not an inexpensive project, so we should do our due diligence.
Well, that's what we'll do then.
Okay.
Next is the personnel report.
We have a motion.
No.
We did have a motion. Did we have a second?
We did. So we need those withdrawn?
Well, that's one option. We can table it or we can vote it down. Or up. I'm not telling you how to vote. So, who made the motion?
I did.
And the second?
Gretchen.
Do you want to withdraw them?
No.
All right, then we will, I guess we'll vote on the issue.
Did I make a motion to table? I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay. He needs a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Where does this, where does this put us then?
Well, first we vote on that motion. If it's tabled, then we're done with it. Till we get two more bids. If this motion is voted down, then we vote on your motion.
But if we table it?
You have to be certain time, normally, and normally have a table until after the city approval. That, that might not give us time though, that's why, might not give us enough time for a bid.
But our next vote would, wouldn't be till the end of November, mid, late November.
The Planning and Architectural Review Commission meets the second Monday of each month.
So if the, for, our meeting is early, right, in November, so it's a week later, it's in that. Right?
I'm sorry.
Didn't we move our November meeting?
No, it's, it's a week before, yeah, it's the thirteenth and ours is the twentieth.
Yes.
I, I just wonder if the council has to approve that. I don't, you've read the, uh, it may, sometimes things have to go to the council from the Plan Commission. I'm not sure if the sign does. I don't think it does, but I'd have to read the ordinance.
Well, we have a motion to table. Jody, will you call the roll?
Torres? No. Bruner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
All right, so we'll take it up at our next meeting.
I, I just one question. Who's to say we can't do construction in the winter? They build a house in the winter. You can't build a sign in the winter?
Might be more costly.
But the concrete costs will go up quite a bit though.
It's concrete and mortar.
You have to tend to it.
Yeah, you have to cover it and keep it warm.
Might have to get more bids.
It's not to say that.
You do that to my house. Let's move to the next slide.
So recommend action to approve the employment of Letitia Avila Aranda, three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, two hours per day. Childcare provider, adult ESL high school effective September twenty-seventh. Stacy Lambrecht, five hours per day, special ed para Washington Elementary effective October fourth. Emma Peters, five hours per day, special ed para Washington Elementary effective October eleventh. Peterson, um, Peterson Pierre, five hours per day, special ed para Washington Elementary effective October fifth. And Arthur John Meyer, eight hours per day, custodian one, high school effective October ninth.
So moved as described.
Second.
Any discussion? Jody?
Bruner?
Yes.
Davis?
She'll be right back.
Judd?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Okay, resignations. Motion to approve the resignation of Gareth Langley, seven point two five hours per day, special ed, paraprofessional high school, effective the end of business day, January nineteenth, twenty eighteen.
So move? Second. Jody?
Davis?
Agstein.
Because she wasn't here.
Judd? Because I wasn't here. Thank you. Judd?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Bruner?
Yes.
District Administrator update.
Okay, I want to thank people for the following donations of less than a thousand dollars. Seven hundred dollars donation from Whitewater Community Foundation. It's a grant awarded to purchase little bits for the steam center at Lakeview. One hundred dollar donation from Don Deal, Whitewater High School Alumni Band for Whitewater High School Band Activity. Five hundred dollar donation, Crystal Singer for the robotics team. Two hundred dollar donation from the Kiwanis Breakfast Club, shoes for high school and middle school students in need. Again, Casey Redd, the declaration. For American Education Week, normally, we, as usual, we've done Sweet Spot cupcakes. Need some assistance. I thank you, Steve, for helping last year. We need to, um, I will be out of town that week, so I'll need some assistance in delivering.
I just want to add, that's one of the best written proclamations I've read, so. Very nice whoever wrote that.
When, when will you be out? When will you be delivering those?
We need to set a, a date and time.
I sh, I should be available.
Matt, are you available to help?
Yeah.
Thank you. Then Tom Prudential and I will be going to Washington DC. Do we need anything else on that? Anything else the board would like to do in celebrating that? Okay, then Tom and I will be in Washington DC, November fifth through the eighth. We're working on planning, at least tentatively, November ninth for, for a community celebration. We'll have the banner, bring it back. Still more information coming soon. Last week, the district received the school, school report cards. They are embargoed at this time. There's not a specific date. Right now, there's a challenge period where schools have questions. Go through that update so things could change a little bit, anticipating the announcements at the end of November. Other things, been meeting with a subset of the district leadership team on sponsorship, continue to provide updates there. One thing, I was contacted last week, um, questioned whether or not we'd have summer school next year with all our construction. The answer is yes. Are we working on the place? Yes. And we hope to have that done the next couple of months, so. I know that's on people's mind, just wanted to make that an announcement. Kelly Seck and I are working on developing our strategic planning, probably a presentation at the November meeting. And then later on, I'll, I'll load a little more detail, but Cullen is able to move up the middle school fine arts construction, and I'll cover that later.
All right, any questions for Mark?
Clarifying question on sponsorships. Will the board be approving that? The only reason, okay, good.
Yeah.
Because that's in our policies too.
Yeah. They, I've been taking, what, PRC talk, I informed them, we met the day after, and then, um, working on the policy revision, going from there. So eleven is a new area, just for a little more information. These are, as the construction communications, these are on our webpages, those are noticed. So these are the informa, this is the information we've been sharing with the community. We will have a press release coming up soon, just with the middle school update, and I, I'll, I'll talk about that in B, but so we're kind of coming to another phase in terms of informing people. So what we're hoping to do then going, any questions about communications?
Would we get a copy of it?
Of the what?
Whatever you're sending out communication. Is it more than just what's in your, the webpages? Or is it just the webpages you're sending?
Webpage connections, and, and I also showed the press releases that everybody got.
Okay, thank you.
So A will be, have less information in the future, but since this is the first time, that's a starting point. So, um, I won't go into detail, but, um, for about the last month, we've been working on, I got a final update today. I've met with the, the middle school administration, we'll talk about it again. But they, we will be starting actually on this Thursday, prepping what used to be the weight room. It's kind of a multipurpose room right now, just to the left of the gym. That's going to turn into our fitness area. Once that gets done, then we're the fitness area, that will be, everything will be moved into that. That will become our new art room, and so it's just a circle, if you will. In detail, um, you can look at it if you have questions. I'll happily go through it in detail if you'd like, but it has a schedule in terms of timing. What this will do is reduce the amount of work during the summer, create some opportunities, actually some flexibilities perhaps for summer school. But in a nutshell, construction progress, we've completed about fifteen percent of the work. Another thirty-five percent will be done between Lincoln Middle School and High School during the school year, and then the rest of the work will be done during the summer. Okay, see, this is, I'll go through a little more detail here. The, and Jody, if you could put the summary of changes during the planning. So once the referendum was passed, these com, these are conversations that were had with the core planning team in terms of how to basically complete the renovation as proposed. And so as you know, if there were big, big changes, like the front drive, there were questions. And once the front drive position or that, that was eliminated, then the main office being relocated changed. As a result, that created opportunity, funding opportunities that allowed us to enhance our fine arts area. We increased the fine arts classrooms by thirty percent instead of just remodeling existing rooms. As you know, the curb this summer was addressed. One of the things I found out in the middle school, I've got these pretty much organized by schools, and these are the, the big ones. PE locker rooms, oversight and planning process. There was not equal space access, which is the Title IX. We did not oper, have operable showers for our young women at the middle school. So that's been adjusted and addressed for equity. The high school, we did, again, as we talked to the skylights, got a, this is outside the referendum, but something that got added in in the process. The MPR, it was eliminated, the project was eliminated due to lack of functionality and additional costs due to required fire code compliance. High school auditorium, with opportunities, I can get into this, provided we're six hundred thousand dollars under on bid day. This was an opportunity to, to complete some projects and update a highly used component of the district. Then we've got the north driveway at the Lincoln, it remains the same. The negotiation did not come to fruition, as everybody's been informed. At Lincoln, the goal has been to make Lincoln as new as possible. Again, we're, we're working to finalize this, but initially, we were hoping that the existing casework would be durable enough. We have found it not to be. Another part of the bidding process with the parking lot, even when we, if we were going to update the driveway, which we chose not to because of the changes in the negotiate, what we were hoping to negotiate, the part of the quote did not include addressing- The, part of the quote did not include addressing the aging parking lot, which is the donate, what used to be the, the tennis lot, so we've been able to address that. At Washington, space in the main office was at the entrance, due to functionality, there was no way to contain the entrance, so they had to extend the entrance off. What I will call, if you're walking in on the left side, be going through a win- what is currently a window. I'm not probably describing that as well as others can. Also, main office, and when architects look at things, sometimes they overlook IT closets, so Charlie was invaluable for reminding us that certain things, yes, they can be moved, but at a huge expense. Initially in the conversations, 4K was going to go into what would have been renovated locker rooms. Those would have been the narrowest 4K and darkest 4K classrooms in the state, that may be an overexaggeration, but as a result, we kept 4K there, and we've used OTPT and, and meeting space, you know, things that aren't used all day. Also in the planning, Washington la- was hoping to have some classroom libraries, that's something that we were able to find some space in the hallways, using the elevator space. Lakeview, through the, the request of Lakeview, they rejected EUA's plan for upgrading most of the main office, and, and asked to have it simplified, reorg to, to have it usable in the way that they want it. Driveway, to have it, excuse me, for the typo in traffic, they'd like more space, we're continuing to work on that. Interestingly enough, we decided to renovate the LMC, elected, for, for whatever reason, chose not to renovate the computer lab. It ended up, we thought it cost a hundred thousand, it actually is going to cost about thirty thousand, so we were way off in estimates. Again, in many cases, we renovated spaces near the LMC, and so we elected to do that. Lakeview is also, you'll notice that the, and Mary's still here, one of the conversations we had at all elementary schools is to go use the existing tile, or go to this new vinyl tile, which is pretty neat, but it costs three times as much. And the, the reality is, that wasn't budgeted to replace all that. So, Lakeview has decided not to replace tile that they believe is already functional. Parking lot and drainage continue to be an issue at, at Lakeview, and so we're working, that's where pain and dullness come in, we're working to, to have a better solution. One, the, the last thing, as of last September 1st, if you're building new or renovating substantially, notifications in certain areas were also audibleized for fire. Given the opportunities and, and wanting to enhance safety, we elected to do that as a district.
Is that a sign or something?
No, it's voice act- so, so it's not only flashing, it, it's flash, it could be as much as flashing noise and voice. So, we worked to, to do that. Jody, if you could go to summary of bid day. So, in April and May, and again, I guess Mary's the only person from the, the team here, but we started to get really nervous about being over budget, under budget. One of the things I appreciate the most of the group, and groups that I've worked with, is there was not a lot of creep, as a result, that's why we have some, have had some opportunities. We were afraid that some of these ideas, you see, that, you heard me talk about earlier, suggestions, and I can talk about these specifically. But we decided to make sure that we knew what we were spending if we bid these. So we bid these as alternates, with the thought of, if we went in under budget, these would be back in, or in, in the case of one pulled out. So, if you look at all those, again, alternate six, it's the bidding of the high school skylight, we, we were able to get the economy of the bid, but that is, again, well now it's going to be suggested Fund 41, previously Fund 10. So, those alternates, because of the bidding was positive. The one thing, alternate 11 is the only one that we rejected. In the hotel world, they do dry sprinklers, where there's no water in it, and then if there's a fire, then they activate. Industry standard in, in schools is that we have a wet sprinkler, I'll just, the opposite of dry, so, we took that out, it was a fif- sixteen to twenty thousand dollar expense, that we just weren't, weren't going to do.
What's the Lincoln time clock?
It's related to, to our HVAC, it's not related to what everybody hopes is a uniform timing system, to be honest, and it's a side note, we still haven't fixed the high school yet, it's probably a signal issue, but that's for another day.
That's great about Lincoln's ceiling fans, have we thought about that?
That is part, I'll, I'll take you to a next level project, so those are acknowledged. Yes?
Sorry, my hand didn't go up fast enough. The, the total four ninety-one, two thirty-one over there in the right, that's the total of all those.
One through four, one through fourteen, well, not eleven, since it was out, correct?
But eleven, what about the six should be subtracted for that, or is that a subtracted?
I, I just used it to total those, it, it's not, you, yeah, you-
Should be in there though, right?
I would take that out for referendum, correct? So, three sixty. Yep. Uh, this was included more with the alternates, so. Okay, then if we go to W's, UD ref budget nine twenty-five. Actually, so this is, I'll, I'll just lay this out. I've got a more in-depth one, we just got one yesterday, so, this is the document that Col- this is how Colin does their budget. And then lastly, change order, so we've approved nine change orders so far. Red is our, red is savings, and then increases based on changes. What I want to share, I can go through all-
Can you go over that again?
Which one?
What you just said.
The change orders?
Yeah.
We're, we're com- there's a sheet for it.
Oh, cause I didn't see it.
It's coming.
There you go.
Okay, so first change order, previously, I think it was Jeremy and Nate, but then you change over to me and Neil, so that was no cost. The process, and so this was a big one, this was also some of the, what I would call, we didn't know what it would look like. Bottom line is work process, which is electrical, we had, we went with second lowest bidder based on ability to perform. So, this ends up getting corrected because of the painting scope, but, you know, again, we had a lot of variability there, once things got flushed out, this is something that Matt and I have negotiated. I, I, I've pushed for a while, and we also got a change in the total, I'll call it the, what we do call it, Matt, the total fees for the project be- because of, because of the variability in electrical engineering. So, the rest, some of this is, I'll, I'll admit, construction speak, but the voiceover component, that's for the safety, courtyard features. You know, some metalwork, sidewalks and changes, we were able to, we did a little bit more work there, Lincoln parking, that's what I talked about before, some civil work. You'll notice the deductions, HVAC, we, they initially called for taking out an existing, a working classroom heater, I'm not using the right term, I apologize, we said we could use the existing ones, so that saved us money. The other two, again, the tiles I talked about, and then the access lane, we're going to do a little bit more work, but it wasn't necessary, so. That's where we're at, we're also working on painting, you know, you can see eight is the gym, ash trees, because they're here, they did that a lot cheaper than what, in talking to people. Based on high demand, so. I jumped around a little bit. Any questions?
Yeah, just the accounts from construction contingency from the owner contingency.
Owner allowance, yep.
What, what's the intercom from the owner?
That's the safety.
And the others from the owner, is that not contingency?
Which one, Jim?
Okay, it's a number, it's number seventeen.
One sixty-one?
From the owner.
That's the safety.
Yeah, the paint and the auxiliary gym.
Right.
Yeah, it's not from contingency, but it's from-
Well, it comes out of contingency, it's an owner request.
So that's different than, from the con- owner contingency then?
No, it comes out of owner contingency, that's just-
So it should-
We can put owner contingency.
Gotcha.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Just got tired of putting owner contingency in.
Yeah, and, in, in the end, the, the paint, you know, and Jeff, you've been, you're in the, that room a little bit more than the rest of us. It got to a point of, one, it was due, and two, there was so much repair work that if we did half of it, it would just be ran- not random, but just wouldn't look good.
So are the alternates going to happen?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Those are accepted on bid day. So project timeline, this is a look ahead, I'm not going to go through that, if that's okay. E, I'll provide updates monthly for you on this. If you look at it. Please do not use this as one to one, the two bolds are, that's ending, I'll call it the starting point and ending point, so, if you total those up, the, yes, that doesn't equal out. And then these are the adjustments as of last September 24th, and I think we just got an update this week.
Is that owner contingency, Mark?
Yeah.
Is that, what's left?
That is, as of September.
Right.
Right. So then. Any questions, I don't want to-
Mr. Toppolo, thank you.
So, one of the questions, and I appreciate, this was suggested to me, I liked it a lot, be talking to, for a while, one of the process, planning processes was, you know, the former term is wish list, which I will never mention again. Is, you know, what are things that would make a difference in individual buildings? And so, what I have is a document for you, in terms of what's currently on the list, I will be talking with the district leadership team. And I'll explain why some of these are a priority in a little more detail. But the white here are things on the list that buildings have said are important. If you scroll down, there are gray ones that were considered, are hopeful, and this started probably, what, mid to late winter? And then we eventually got to a point of, you know, everybody had five things that would really make a difference. So these are things over time that we've completed or deleted, and then there's kind, the cross out is deleted, and then an explanation. You know, some of it was already in there, for example. Or, you know, in February, we started talking about things we wanted to do, you know, at, at a point in time, you know, you pass a referendum, and this is a point that we've challenged our, our business partners, because if we do it ourselves, then there aren't fees associated. And so, the, these are things, for example, we, fortunate with Charlie's leadership, and Andy has taken the ball and run just with Justin, and we've got another, let's see, one of our summer workers back here. Zach, and then we have Zach Burton, that's also, so we're really lucky, we, right now, we're basically buying equipment, we're paying them, you know, the daily stuff. But instead of paying the, you know, to outsource the labor, we're getting work done, so we were able to get things going with these projects, especially the cameras and technology go a long way. So these are the, yes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, these are the next level projects.
After the white one, the top?
Yep, yep.
Uh, when. Is this, is this in a order of priority, or?
No, they're grouped by school, the, the PRs are priority, and I'll, I'll explain a little bit, what some, some of my observations, you know, a year in. Right now, as we talk about projects, it's extremely difficult for us to do a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar project in one year. So, part of the questions that I'm asking or probing are, are there projects that would give us better opportunities in the future to, to do stuff on an annual basis? The high school roof, this is, some of our roofs can be divided into sections, this is a roof, number twelve is one big roof. So, I, I put it out there, not because I think it's the absolute most exciting thing, but on the other hand, the three eighty is a challenge, or, as we talk about, in, in the future, if we could do smaller roofs, a hundred and twenty-five a piece, or, or smaller, we, we have flexibility. If we were to do this, and this is a big if, then that would create some, you know, us to do other projects on an annual basis, and so that's what that could do. The, the other ones that are listed in key fobs, that's associated, it's something that we have at front doors as a part of the bid system, but something, we're still researching, but that's evolving. I would say most schools have it, is the best way to put it, not, not that we need to have everything. Furniture in Lincoln again, and I'll stop after the priorities. We're trying to make that building as new as possible. I don't think we need a hundred and twenty-five, but we, we just haven't gotten to the point of, what do we need, I know Mary and her team has identified what they think they need, and we're also just trying to be uniform too, because we don't want four classrooms to get one thing, and, and then lastly, high school pavement, you know, again.
That's about six hundred thousand?
Four.
About for the priority, if you did the priority.
Oh, yeah, roughly, yep.
And how much do we have?
Well, right now, I'll, I'll take you to the, where we currently are, contingency is one four, we'll get to, we can-
One million four.
Yeah, I'll get to that, I, I'd want to quote the exact number, yep. So I'll be talking with the admin team, is this something that, we'll just keep you updated on, are there any, and kind of go from there? So.
Be nice to know the other priorities that come up on this.
Oh yeah, no, I'll update, yep, absolutely. Okay, so, lastly is the budget. Oops, I clicked on Matt's budget, sorry. Go to the last one, seventeen, ten seventeen. So. You, do you want to go bigger, is that okay?
No.
Okay.
I, I printed it out, it's always too small.
Okay, so.
I'll get to it, but-
Highlights of this one is we've negotiated, we've completed our negotiation with fees with EUA, so we were able to negotiate thirty-eight thousand in savings. The twenty-five hundred, it's just the ma- it hasn't been put into a change order, but we moved a poll, so we have to pay them. Our current owner contingency as of Sunday was two hundred thousand, and then you have the, the builder contingency, which I believe is, why did I, I think it's up a little bit. I'm just going to keep it at one point three five. I'll stay conservative on that. So, we have some opportunities, and as, when Neil was here from Colin the last time, he talked about how some money could come back, we'd get updated numbers in April, but we'll also have money at the end of the year. That would come out differently. Any questions?
Anyone? All right.
Yeah, unal- unallocated construction contingency is one point three five right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thanks for sticking around.
Definitely. Our third Friday account was finalized since our meeting in September. Our enrollment, which again is butts in seats, was eighteen hundred and ninety-four students. Our membership, which is students who live in the district but not necessarily going to our schools, was one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one students. So there's a gap there of eighty-seven stu- eighty-seven students who live in our district but do not attend one of our schools. Compared to last year, we're down fourteen students. to last year, we're down fourteen students for enrollment and down twenty-two students living in the district. And membership is what drives the revenue limit, not enrollment. Any questions there? When making the October first debt payment, I discovered a discrepancy in the energy efficiency resolution that we passed most recently. So, the one that's in the board packet has correct figures. So, the fifteen, sixteen amount has been updated for what the actual payment was. Seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen payments were also updated. So, the effect was adding about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the fifteen, sixteen payment, two-thousand-three-hundred dollars to seventeen, eighteen, and about nine-hundred dollars to eighteen, nineteen. And this would be an action item.
So, just approving those changes that you just outlined?
Yep, motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for revenue limit exemptions for energy efficiencies as presented.
Second.
For any discussion? Jody?
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Up next are budget revisions. The original budget was passed in August. Since then, so we're in the last stage of our budget enrollment process, we've received our equalization aid revenue limit has been finalized. Property, property values have been released. Here are the just significant changes from when the budget was approved in August. Our revenue limit overall decreased about sixty-five thousand. Our general fund levy went down to a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. Our state equalization aid went up about eighty-six thousand. We received a few more open enrollment kids in, adding twenty-three thousand of revenue. On the flip side, though, we also lost a few kids out, which resulted in about sixty-three thousand more of open enrollment expenses. And property values were up about two-point-six percent, which will allow us to defeat some more debt. So, we're able to add about fif- five-hundred-and-fifty thousand of deficits.
Can you define deficits for me?
Yep, so it would be essentially prepaying future debt payments. So, like, let's say we have debt payment in, in the year twenty-twenty-one, we could set the money aside for that right now.
All right, it's an action item.
Was the revenue limit and general fund levies decreased or was it expected?
No, so that was driven by decreased signature. And then overall, we still have a balanced budget, so Fund Ten, revenue went up, expenses were not equal. Same with Fund Twenty-Six, Special Education Fund. Fund Thirty-Eight, which is the non-referendum debt, relates to the energy efficiency exemption that you just approved. Fund Thirty-Nine, the referendum debt, is up by a hundred-and-fifty thousand roughly to defeat additional debt. And then the last item is Fund Forty-One, the capital expansion fund, which is going to be increased for the sign, which will now be increased to cover the skylight. So, this is also an action item to approve the budget revisions as presented.
So... That includes the revision of forty-one?
Yep.
Second.
Any other discussion? Jody?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Next up, we have the levy certification. When the referendum was originally passed in November twenty-sixteen, we were expecting an eighteen-cent mill rate increase. So, that's eighteen, eighteen dollars on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. In August, when we passed the original budget, we were looking at sixteen-point-four cent increase, and now that we are to the final budget, we are looking at a sixteen-cent even increase out to four decimal places.
We overdelivered.
All right, here's a, a comparison of levy by fund this year versus last year. So, overall, property values went up, levy went up, but property values went up. So, mill rate again went up sixteen cents, so it's eleven dollars and fifty-two point two-two cents.
So, mostly driven by the property values, is that?
Property values going up allowed us to defeat more debt.
No, that's not just the city. It takes in townships, too. 'Cause some people like to compare the school district to cities. Two different big things.
Nine different things.
Yeah.
And here's just a chart of our historical mill rate. So, it's averaged between the ten, eleven, twelve, twelve-dollar range for the past eight years. And this is again an action item, so proposed into, a motion to certify the levy slash tax rate for the seventeen, eighteen school year in the amount of fifteen million, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and three, seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
Even.
Yes.
So, move?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Jody?
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Next up is approval of a snow removal contract for Lakeview Elementary. We plow all other schools in the district. Lakeview, we sub out. We sent a request for bids out to four vendors. I cannot force vendors to reply, so we only received two bids. Jordan Green of Green Lawn Care Services did the plowing last year and submitted a bid again, so we would propose going with him. The cost is equal to the last year's.
And reports where the service was good?
Yes.
All right.
So, this may not exceed five-thousand dollars, but it has the potential because it's based on actual use.
So, we need a motion?
Motion to approve contracting with Green Care Lawn Services for snow removal at Lakeview Elementary during the twenty-seventeen, eighteen winter season.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Jody?
Torres?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Next up is approval of a CNC plasma cutter. This will be funded by a career and technical education incentives grant. The district receives a thousand dollars per pupil who completes an industry-recognized certification. Right now, they have about thirty-two thousand dollars of funding available. They are recommending going with the Torchmate forty-four-hundred. This is coming from Mike Wentz. He has spoke with other schools who use the plasma cam, which is the cheapest, and is a giant paperweight in their district. It is unusable. The other option, the burn table, he is not aware of anyone actually using that. That is the equipment.
So, this is money the grant will pay for?
Yes.
Naturally, they earned it, so...
So, they have all that money?
We have the money. It's not a, yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Yep, they, this has been savings going on for two years now.
That's great.
Is there any other discussion? Take the good stuff. Jody?
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Next up is approval of a levy certification. When the referendum was originally passed in November twenty-sixteen, we were expecting an eighteen-cent mill rate increase. So, that's eighteen, eighteen dollars on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. In August, when we passed the original budget, we were looking at sixteen-point-four cent increase, and now that we are to the final budget, we are looking at a sixteen-cent even increase out to four decimal places.
We overdelivered.
All right, here's a, a comparison of levy by fund this year versus last year. So, overall, property values went up, levy went up, but property values went up. So, mill rate again went up sixteen cents, so it's eleven dollars and fifty-two point two-two cents.
So, mostly driven by the property values, is that?
Property values going up allowed us to defeat more debt.
That's not just the city. It takes in townships, too. 'Cause some people like to compare the school district to cities. Two different big things.
Nine different things.
Yeah.
And here's just a chart of our historical mill rate. So, it's averaged between the ten, eleven, twelve, twelve-dollar range for the past eight years. And this is again an action item, so proposed into, a motion to certify the levy slash tax rate for the seventeen, eighteen school year in the amount of fifteen million, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and three, seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
Even.
Yes.
So, move?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Jody?
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
All right, sorry.
Yeah, so Casey, Jim, and I attended that. It was very informative. I'll make a list on a communication if you're interested in anything. Special education, FMLA, a lot of, you know, a good update. And tomorrow, the DLT is taking the pop quiz we took on the, on the new...
Are we gonna release the grades, if you see?
Well, it's a closed meeting, so we...
There's one thing that did come up, as you know, was the WASP has a, on the website, the, the budget, well-documented, the changes that affect us. So, if you get a chance, we'll consider that.
Board engagement opportunities, there is a list there, if anyone chooses to attend any of those. And we're at the end of our agenda.
Just another communication item. At our last meeting, we had the FPLA report about the national convention, and a student could not go, possibly, Quanis has stepped forward to cover that.
Yeah.
I don't know if that student is going now or not, to check with the teacher, that they would underwrite three-hundred dollars of her...
Wow, outstanding.
Any generous people in this community?
Well, and we should make sure there's procedures in place to where we don't need to find out about it at a board meeting if this is necessary either. Like, there's a fun, anyway, that should be available to help.
Generally, a building level.
A large number of students who are bowling, and can't satisfy all of them.
Well, that's not for us to solve tonight, but there's, there's a procedure in place, I understand, to help students as well. So, thank you, Quanis.
All right, come to the end of our agenda. Head of motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's good.
I adjourn.